Let me call to order this meeting of the West Palm Beach City Commission. Today is Monday, December 11, 2023, and the time is 5:00 PM. We will start this meeting off, as we do all of our meetings, with a moment of silence. Madam President, can you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? I will go over the rules of civility and decorum which govern our meetings. Officials shall be recognized by the Chair and should not interrupt the Speaker. Public comments shall be addressed to the City Commission as a whole and not to any individual in the dais from the audience. Displays of anger, rudeness, ridicule, and patience, lack of respect, and personal attacks are strictly prohibited. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, stamping of feet, whistles, yells, and similar demonstrations should not be permitted. Please govern yourselves accordingly, as offenders may be removed from the meeting. Also, if you desire to speak on a particular item, you need to complete a comment card for each agenda item that you want to speak on, and that card should be completed with person's full name, address, and the number of agenda item. If it's not correctly completed, then you won't be recognized. All right. Ms. Johnson, are there any additions, deletions, reorganization of the agenda?
No.
Was your mic on?
No, my mic was not on, and no, there are no additions or deletions to the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Johnson. Okay, we do have a receive and file of the Art Life Committee's annual report, which has been delivered. Thank you, Sibylle. All right. Consent calendar, items 7.1 through 7.15. Any questions, comments on consent, commissioners? Do we have any cards on consent? All right. If there are no comments or questions, I'll entertain a motion.
May I move approval of the consent calendar as presented, items 7.1 through 7.15?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing in opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 8.1, Resolution Number 312-23, approving the development, publication, and distribution of a children's book about Grassy Waters Preserve, granting licenses associated with the book, and authorizing the execution of an agreement regarding the children's book among Vera de Chalambe, Christina Yure, Grassy Waters Conservancy, Inc., and the city of West Palm Beach. Who is speaking on this item?
So, good evening, Mayor. Mayor James, City Commissioners, and Minister Ed Johnson. For the record, my name is Victor Carrozzi. I'm the Ute Lees Director here for the city of West Palm Beach. The resolution this commission just moved approving the publication and distribution of a children's book, Sam the Snailkite, supports a mission of our Grassy Waters Preserve to provide a diverse educational nature experience. In fact, it was this educational drive that evolved into this book. Grassy Waters offers opportunities to be part of the Everglades ecosystem, canoe and kayak educational tours, walking tours, a mile-long boardwalk that takes you through the preserve. I encourage everyone to take, to look us up on the web. Links can be found under the thing tab, Things to Do tab on the city's webpage. Come out for an afternoon. Sign up for our educational programs or just stop by, observe. It's a beautiful place. It's just a short drive west along Northlake Boulevard from the Beeline Highway. Sorry, Mayor, but I just had to give a brief plug for our Grassy Waters. As you know, it's a truly remarkable place. So, Sam the Snailkite. The book origin started with the Grassy Waters educational staff's desire to improve the experience walking along the boardwalk. They envisioned creating a story from interpretive signs to help educate visitors as they walked along the boardwalk trail. That creative effort grew with the help of a great talent on our staff into the book, Sam the Snailkite. Mary Kreider, our environmental education supervisor at Grassy Waters, will lead us through a brief presentation of the book. But before turning it over to Mary, first you may be asking, what is a snailkite? I know I asked. So, a snailkite is a bird of prey. It's a type of hawk. This bird was among the first animals labeled as endangered by the Fish and Wildlife Service back in 1967. According to the Florida Audubon, the snailkite is a bird in trouble. It remains listed by both the Florida and the federal government as an endangered species as much of its habitat is lost. Its main diet of apple snails requires a careful balance of great water quality and water depth in a wetland area. Not too much water, not too dry conditions. We're lucky at Grassy Waters Preserve with our healthy ecosystem to have a population of this bird and its main diet of apple snails. Our mission to preserve and protect this ecosystem is that it is not only a habitat for endangered species such as a snailkite, but grassy water serves as our drinking water supply. The better the ecosystem here, the better our water. And the best way to preserve both is through education and preservation. The more people understand and learn about the pristine conditions at Grassy Waters, we're hopeful they'll understand our mission and help support our efforts to protect this ecosystem for our continued source of good water quality and preservation of endangered species. With that, may I introduce Mary Kreider, Educational Supervisor at Grassy Waters, and our book, Sam the Snailkite. Thank you.
Thank you, Victor. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Let me just pull up our PowerPoint slides here so you can see some of the graphics from the book. So, what we're proposing is the city's first children's book entitled Sam the Snailkite and the Secret of the Everglades. The main purpose of the book is to encourage conserving water and preserving water quality by protecting grassy waters and the Everglades ecosystem. The author and illustrator for the book were a part of our Grassy Waters talented team. So, our author was Vera de Richelambert, and our illustrator was Christina Yure. Both are listening today. Vera is actually in the audience today, and Christina is listening to the broadcast. They're part of our Evergrade, our everyday heroes out here at Grassy Waters and at the So, for something like this with the project, we can't do it without partners, so we are proposing to work with Grassy Waters Conservancy and Florida Power and Light. They are willing to provide the first 1,000 printed copies of the book. And the start of this story really starts out at Grassy Waters and in the Everglades with Sam the Snailkite. And as I mentioned, Christina Yure is a talented artist that created Sam the Snailkite and that Everglades family that's throughout the whole story. And Vera, one of our Nature Center Education Assistants, really provided the narrative for the book, creating this whole story that we've put together. And how it develops is Sam is worried about his home, the Everglades, and he does live out at Grassy Waters Preserve as well. He's part of the endangered species, as Victor mentioned, and he's sad and scared and angry about this and wants to know how to help the Everglades and keep it from disappearing. It develops from there as he sets out to get help from his friends. All of his friends depend on the drinking water that the Everglades provides. And finally, Billy, Sam's seminal friend, knows the secret, and the secret to protect the Everglades is protecting the water, and we all have to do this together. A special thanks to the Aha! Ta Tiki Museum for advising on this book, and also for Pedro to represent the character of Billy. And kind of our end goals with this, if this moves forward, is to provide books to families throughout the city. Ways we hope to do that is provide books to the city school libraries. Also want to install a living story walkout at Grassy Waters so they can actually read the book as they hike our trails. And we want to make it available online and in our nature center for donation through our Grassy Waters Conservancy. Any questions?
Well, thank you for that very enlightening presentation. I love the pictures. Any questions, comments, commissioners? Commissioner Ward?
Just a, just a comment. Thank you so much. This is exciting, and it's, I can't wait to share this story with my daughter. I really appreciate you guys taking the time to do this and highlight such an important part of our city. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All right, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
May I move approval of Resolution Number 312-23?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing in opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you again so much. Resolution Number, item 8.2, Resolution Number 322-23, approves as face of the city, a large-scale sculpture titled Ripples by local artist Nestor Guzman to be installed at Echo Lake Park. Ms. Walter.
Good evening, mayors, commissioners. Sibylle Walter, Director of Arts, Culture, and Community Building. Nestor Guzman is a local artist originally from Bogota, Columbia, and he was an artist that was selected and identified by the Art Life Committee. The neighborhoods surrounding Echo Lake Park had come to Art Life requesting if there was funding and availability for a sculpture that would further enhance their area. So, where you see the arrow is a placement for the artwork. You can see that it's amongst the trees. That was identified near the path where the lake is. So, what we did is we had the artist come out to several site visits. We invited key neighborhood associations to meet the artist. He in turn created three different examples of what a sculpture could be, and on Saturday, October 21st, we brought it to the community and we had a meet and greet, and the artist was able to represent the three pieces to the neighborhoods. And they actually, upon doing a Q and A with him, learning more about the practice of working with marble, they actually did the voting. So, they chose Ripples, which is a large eight-foot sculpture made out of marble that will sit on a one-foot by six-foot base. So, what he says is that the sculpture represents how we build community, how we treat one another affects us and our surroundings, creating a ripple effect. And that resonated with this neighborhood. So, this was based on majority. And again, this is a different viewpoint, and it'll be the first piece actually in the collection that uses marble, which is interesting because the, the material itself predates even writing, so as a material for artists. So, there you have, so, the Art Life Committee is recommending to City Commission, Ripples by Nestor Guzman, to go into Echo Lake Park. Ripples, building community. So, I'm going to go back to the picture because I like leaving it at the picture.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for that presentation. Questions? Commissioner Ward?
Thank you, Sibylle. I know it was discussed with the community event that potentially to get some sort of lighting. Have we looked into that any further?
The lighting would have to go through the parks because it's a passive park, and normally they don't light artworks in a passive park. They also have the hours that the park closes at dawn. There's also that, we also discussed that the residents around the area might not completely appreciate lighting.
The light. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
May I move approval of Resolution Number 322-23?
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing in opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 8.3, Resolution Number 332-23, approves the proposed art concepts of Amy Lincoln, Annie Morris, and Clip Collective for 575 Rosemary by the related companies to satisfy the public art requirement. One percent of the total construction cost is $880,000. Ms. Walter.
Thank you. So, I'm going to start with an image of the square right now with the public art that they currently have, and the larger circles represent the three pieces I'll be representing today, presenting to, uh, Commission today. So, you can see that there are several already in place, including our Yinka Shanabari piece. And we're going to start off with Amy Lincoln. She is going to create a large mural on a 5,000-square-foot wall, and this piece is going to be amazing. It's a beautiful yellow sun, very positive messaging. The artist, it's interesting, she uses three colors plus white to create this, which if you look at the color palette, it's interesting that it's only those three colors. So, you see here, sun through leaves spectrum, and you see the size of the wall, and it's going to be very impressive. But again, it's, it's, it brings such a positivity to the site and to the city. And another angle, and you can see that the work will flow out into other parts of the building to create a sense of trail. Amy Lincoln is an emerging artist, so this is going to be her largest piece that will be created, and it's, it's an exciting piece. And here's another angle, again, sort of giving it a surprise element to, to the work. The next piece is by Annie Morris. Annie Morris is mostly known for her sculptures, though she has other mediums that she works with. As you can see, and this one in particular, it's called Stack Nine Ultramarine Blue. It's very precarious. This is about nine feet in height, and these are all solid spheres made out of different, mostly bronze materials that she patinas and colors. And she does this intentionally. So, at one point, they're very joyful with their coloring, but as you can see, they, it looks like they're about to topple over. So, there's this balance in between of the surprise element of what could possibly happen. And here, you see a little snapshot of her studio, and again, you can see the size of the piece in comparison to the individual. And this will sit right outside of 575 Rosemary. In this picture, you don't see it, but the Related is actually going to create a pathway so that viewers can experience it 360, and you'll be able to walk around the entire piece. And then the next piece that they're proposing is in the proposed archway that it's an entry point into the square. It sits between Tommy Bahamas and Lululemon, for those of you who know the area. And it's Clip Collective. So, Clip Collective is a, does mapping and projection, and they are creating, this will be more of a nightscape piece. Let me see if I can give you a little sampling of this really quick, so you can get an idea of what the sensory experience would feel like. And it might not have sound, but that's okay. It's supposed to have sound also, but you get the idea of how the projection would work, and so whether you're walking to, into the square or outside, back into your parking garage, you will definitely have an interesting experience. It's long, so I'm not going to take you through the whole thing. So, their public art budget was $880,000 for the three pieces that they are proposing that the Art Life Committee reviewed. And what they are proposing are Sun Through Leaves by Amy Lincoln, so a large-scale 5,000-square-foot mural, stack number nine, Ultramarine Blue, a sculpture, an addition of, one of three, and Clip Collective, an immersive lighting experience. And so, the Art Life Committee is recommending to City Commission that it meets the criteria set forth in the Code of Ordinances and is recommending this to City Commission from related companies.
Very good. Thank you. Will the Clip Collective, will the actual installation have music as people walk through?
I, yes.
Okay.
But low-key.
All right. Questions, comments, commissioners? Commissioner Fox?
Thank you. These are so beautiful and so different. I am, I'm a neighbor to these projects, so I'm very excited. I'm wondering, I know that we've talked about it with some of the other things in the city that, you know, making sure that people are aware of who the artist is and maybe a little bit of information about what the project is. I know that this is a related project and not the city, but is there, will people be able to identify, I guess, you know, to be able to have the background of the artwork somewhere close to the artwork?
Yes. So, each one of them will have some sort of mark, like the ones currently at the square, and I know that Related is working on their own, like, internal art map to give even further information.
Very good. President Warren?
Thank you, Mayor. I know that we typically look for artists that have a tremendous amount of experience in this space, so I do appreciate, um, giving an opportunity to an emerging artist for this. And I also appreciate that all three of these installations are very different and unique to the specific space in which they will be occupying, so I think this was a good project.
Very good. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
May I move to approve Resolution Number 332-23?
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing in opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 8.4, Resolution Number 93-23, establishing the calculation, calculation for the historic preservation height bonus assessment applicable in certain sub-districts of the Northwood Mixed Use District.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Ann Hamilton, Historic Preservation Planner, presenting Resolution Number 93-23 for the Northwood Height Assessment. In 2018, Ordinance 4772-18 established certain height bonuses which, within the Northwood Mixed Use District, which gave developers the option to increase their building height by electing to utilize a bonus option. One of these options was to pay into the Northwood Preservation Fund, which funds historic preservation in the Northwood Mixed Use District. And specifically in this section of the code, it does say that the amount of the historic preservation height bonus assessment shall be established by a resolution of the City Commission and may be adjusted from time to time. Since these changes in 2018, no development has expressed an interest in utilizing this height bonus until now. City staff and CRA have met and come to an agreement on establishing a cost per square foot intended to reflect the market difference between the Northwood area, where the bonus is to be applied, and the downtown, where TDRs are typically transferred. Staff is therefore proposing to set the rate at $8.50 per square foot. This represents half the current rate, which is $17 per square foot, of the TDR rate in downtown, and these funds are intended to be used to provide for improvements and maintenance to structures in the Northwood Road Historic District. And staff recommends approval of this resolution.
Very good. Thank you for that presentation. Any questions? If there are none, then I will entertain a motion.
May I move approval of Resolution Number 93-23?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing in opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item Number 8.5, Resolution Number 339-23, finding that city-owned property located at 815 Palm Beach Lakes Boulevard is not needed for city purposes, declaring the property a surplus, and providing the method of disposition to be negotiation of a conveyance agreement with the Sickle Cell Foundation. President Warren?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to take this time to recuse myself from discussion and voting on item 8.5 as I am an employee of the Sickle Cell Foundation.
Very good. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Ms. Johnson, for the record, I'm Kimberly Spence, Assistant Director of Housing and Community Development, and I'll be presenting the item before you, which is the surplus and selection of a method of disposition for city-owned property located at 815 Palm Beach Lakes Boulevard. This property is more commonly known as the Jenkins House. The city acquired this property by tax deed sale, and it includes the Jenkins House as well as the adjacent city-owned parcel, which contains the vicar's house. For the purposes of this resolution, the intent of the city is to surplus and convey the parcel that includes only the Jenkins House, along with approximately half of the access drive and half of the parking area. As you can see in the image in the top right from the property appraiser's office, the parcel lines appear to run through the vicar's house, so the Department, Housing and Community Development Department is in the process of securing a survey to identify the property boundaries, and at that point, if we decide to proceed with the conveyance, it may require some replating. To give you some background, since 2019, the property has been occupied by the Sickle Cell Foundation of Palm Beach County. This is since they relocated from their former site on North Australian Avenue. City staff has been negotiating a lease with the Sickle Cell Foundation for dedicated office space as well as shared space in the Eva W Mac Community Hub, which, as you know, is the new location on the site, which is currently occupied by HCD's Community Services Division. As part of the ongoing negotiation, the Sickle Cell Foundation has asked us to consider their continued occupancy of the property at the Jenkins House. The foundation desires to continue to be predominantly situated in the heart of the community that it serves and to be able to help lead the effort to revitalize and enhance that community. The foundation has expressed its interest to, intent to explore grants and other funding opportunities to repair the historic structure, which will help to enhance and beautify the space and the neighborhood. I'd also like to point out that it's not unusual for the city to engage in real estate transactions with nonprofit entities. We have several long-term leases with other nonprofits, as well as we've conveyed city-owned property in the past to other nonprofit entities such as the Urban League of Palm Beach County. In accordance with the Code of Ordinances, Section 231, prior to any formal negotiations for sale, lease, or exchange of city property, the City Commission shall make a legislative finding that the property is not needed for city purposes and to declare the property as surplus, as well as to select a method of disposition. The recommended method of disposition is for, in this case, is for formal negotiations with the interested party, the Sickle Cell Foundation. If this resolution is approved tonight, the next steps will be the city staff's continued negotiations with the foundation. If we do agree to the terms and conditions, we will return to City Commission for approval of a conveyance agreement, which will require two readings or two approving votes of the City Commission, and one of those votes must be by supermajority of the City Commission. So, that concludes my presentation, and staff recommends approval of Resolution 339-23. If there are any questions, I'll be happy to take those, and I'd also like to point out that the Chair of the Foundation and their attorney are here as well, if you have any questions that you'd like to direct to them.
Very good. Thank you for that presentation.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments, commissioners? All right. You did such a wonderful job. You have a speechless up here. If not, I will certainly entertain a motion.
May I move approval of- Mayor, I move approval of Resolution Number 339-23.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, discussion. Hearing done, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like, sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item nine point one, public hearing and second reading of ordinance Number 5078-23, amending the definition of special event to specifically include large group feeding, adding the time to process a large group feeding special event application, providing for waiver of the permanent application fee, and making other minor modifications.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. Erling Frankenarrow from the City Attorney's Office. This is second reading, and there are no changes.
Okay, this is second reading, any questions or comments? All right, we do have two cards. Sandy McAvick and Lauren Griffiths, start making your way toward the podium, please.
Sandy McAvick of Tress, Palm Beach. Something funny, Commissioner? I want you to think about what you're doing with this vote. I want you to think of the people you're hurting with this vote. Their clothes are dirty, they don't smell too good, they don't have a roof over their head. They wander the streets all night and sleep in the parks all day, because at nighttime they're attacked and brutalized. Okay? James started this war with the homeless because he promised the wealthy he'd get them out of sight. James cannot accomplish this without City Commissioner's vote. I want you to think about that. And when it comes time for vote, please, into the microphone, I want to hear who made the, who made, who approved it and who seconded it. I don't want to go through what I went through with the last vote and not know who said what, because you were... And when you talk, talk into the microphone, please. But consider what you're doing. James, you can't hurt these people and eventually say you're sorry, because you'll never know the damage you've done until it happens to you. Do you really think you can't lose your job? Do you really think you can't lose your law license? And when you do, you're going to lose your wife, you're going to lose your friends, they're all going to walk away from you. You're going to do time in jail, maybe, maybe five years? So when you come out, you have no family, no home, no job, no way to support yourself, and you're hungry. Let me give you a heads up. Get down to 100 Tormata Street. FNB will be there on Saturday night feeding the homeless. You can get in line, okay? They'll feed you, they'll feed you. Think about what you're doing. You all got enough to eat? You all got a roof over your head? These people do not. The organizations that help them, some of them are wonderful. They're closed on the weekends. Nobody feeds the homeless on the weekends. So what are they supposed to do? Go hungry from Friday until Monday? Is that, is that the plan? Is that what you're going to put in motion? They're hungry, so what? With the exception of Keith James, I hope yous never know a hungry day in your life.
Thank you very much. Lauren Griffiths?
Hi, thank you for your time today. As a citizen of West Palm Beach and an active participant in the nonprofit community, with work being done alongside organizations like Hope for the Homeless, Food Not Bombs, Youth Concept Gallery, and Quantum House, I am disappointed but not surprised at the utter disregard for mutual humanitarian aid for the groups that don't directly serve the pockets, tax cuts, and the heartstrings of the upper class of the city. While this ordinance is marketed to the public as a special events permit to keep residents and the public accountable for their upkeep and cleanliness of the city, it is a direct and quite frankly fatal hit to food sharing in nonprofit groups like Hope for the Homeless and Food Not Bombs. Contrary to the popular belief among this council, as well as the West Palm Beach Police Department, homelessness exists with or without mutual aid. Nonprofit groups do not create this problem, citywide negligence does and continues to do so. In stark contrast to neighboring cities such as Delray Beach, which provides an entire homeless outreach unit that provides back humanitarian essentials like food, clothing, haircuts, and shower busses, and welcomes citizens to help participate and donate to these services when necessary, West Palm Beach does the bare minimum when it comes to serving the underserved demographic of the people that live here. The people of this area need to be met with compassion and resources more than the max limit of two times per year in which this ordinance allows. If the city's only answer to its own negligence is using our tax dollars for more camera surveillance to watch desperate people resort to theft of the same basic needs that nonprofits have been providing for free for years, why are these nonprofits being painted as the criminal next and not you? And why don't you, as proclaimed servants of our community, not have a better answer or at least a better attitude to work with the groups that are actually here to serve? Members of Food Not Bombs are currently being threatened with over a thousand dollars collectively in fines for having not more than twenty people present at an event with more than twenty pieces of plastic ware, present in anticipation for more people to come to their events. Another collective, Hope for the Homeless, has also been targeted for sharing clothes, pizza, haircuts, and conversation with the homeless at Games Park, with six officers ending the last event that was ever served here, restricting us from sharing any more resources unless it was with the trash cans, and even then threatening us with citation write-ups and jail time. I can understand how this ordinance is great for baby showers and birthday parties, but to specifically amend this ordinance to condemn these groups and act as if poverty doesn't exist is the biggest detriment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's the last card, any other questions, comments? President Warren?
Thank you, Mayor. I do believe that our HCD department has done a tremendous amount of work in this area, but I do have a couple of questions. Are we aware that, of whether or not there are feeding opportunities that exist in the city or on the weekend?
Is anyone from HCD here to address that question, or legal?
Mayor, I specifically don't have information on the number of feeding opportunities, but Kimberly Spence is at the speaker room, perhaps she has something.
Do you want to address that?
Thank you. I just want to say that I'm not exactly sure if there are any feeding opportunities on the weekends. I know that we provide resources in the county as well throughout the week, but I'm not sure about weekend activities.
Follow-up? Yes, no, follow-up?
Yes. That does pose a challenge, I believe. I would like to know if we're aware of any incidences that occur with any safety or where impact, where safety has been impacted as a result of the changes that we've made in the ordinance that we've put in place.
Can anyone answer that question?
Mayor, I personally cannot. I have not had any reports from anyone to my department with regard to safety issues one way or the other.
HCD hasn't had any reports either, and I could, we can look into feeding on the weekends and provide that information to you.
Mr. Fonner, do you want to address that?
Yes, Mayor Commissioners Armando Fonas and City Administrator, there are several churches that do provide feedings on the weekends. St. Anne's is one of them. There's also a couple of churches on the north end that provide feeding as well. Now that, they have to go there to the location, it's not brought to them. And I also want to point out that this particular ordinance doesn't ban feeding outright, it's, requires a permit when it's a certain size feeding, so...
Thank you, Mr. Fonner.
Let me just state for the record, because it seems to be implied the city does not do anything for the homeless. Let me give you some data. So from October 1st, 2022, through September 30th, 2023, the homeless assistance response team that the city has, and by the way, we have ten full-time employees that we are paying to interact with the homeless. We assisted 246 chronically homeless individuals with housing or shelter. Eighty-six chronically homeless individuals were reconnected to a loved one or a family member through the city's Homeward Bound Program. Sixty-six homeless individuals received referrals and access to mental health and substance use services. Through our collaborative efforts with the Healthcare District and St. Anne Place, an additional 251 unique individuals were referred for mental health and substance use services. One thousand four hundred eighty-five engagements occurred through the city parks, neighborhoods, and targeted locations. One hundred and sixty-five informational engagements were conducted with local businesses and community groups providing education and resources. Two hundred and thirty-two requests for assistance were submitted and addressed through the city's online homeless activity reporter, which is an app where if somebody sees a homeless person, they can report that individual on the app, and that is used to try to provide assistance to the homeless individual. Despite these efforts, 119 individuals refused city services. So as a city, we are making efforts not just to feed someone for a day or two, but to connect them with more permanent assistance, whether it's substance abuse, mental health, shelter, et cetera. So this is data, and it may make some feel good if they provide a meal, but I go back to the old proverb. You can give a man fish and he can eat for a day. You could teach a man to fish and he can eat for a lifetime. What we are trying to do is match these individuals with more long-term supportive services, not a single meal here or there. And we will continue to provide these efforts to assist the homeless on a more long-term basis, not just providing a meal here or there. So while we can't wave a magic wand and eliminate the homeless problem, it is not a West Palm Beach problem. It's not a Palm Beach county, indeed, it's a national problem. And I wish there was a magic wand that we could wave and provide every homeless person with the roof over their head. Unfortunately, we don't have the resources and we can't. So we're doing the best that we can. But it's also important to understand that our waterfront, our parks, are also to be used by those people who want to enjoy the amenities of the city. And so there's got to be a balance. And if the abundance of unhoused are making those parks and waterways unattractive to those who may want to walk their baby strollers there, who may want to walk or jog, that's not the proper balance. And so we, as a city, are trying our best to provide a balance where we're empathetic to the homeless, but we're also working hard to make sure that the quality of life that we so cherish in this city, particularly with our parks and our waterways, is, continues to be made available. So I am proud of the efforts and work that we are doing each and every day, not just on weekends, to provide more permanent services to the homeless, and we will continue to do so. And so that's all I have on that. President Warren?
Mayor, I agree that our city has done and does a tremendous amount in order to address this very complex issue. And Mayor, I would like to make a motion.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I move that we approve ordinance Number 5078-23 on second reading.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, discussion. Hearing done, Madam Clerk, can you read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance Number 5078-23, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, at Chapter 78, Streets, Sidewalks, and Public Places, Article 6, Special Events, Division 1, Generally, Section 78-151, Definitions, Section 78-153, Application for a Special Event Permit, Section 78-155, Reservation of Dates, Application Fee and Deposit, at Article 16, Public Places, Section 78-468, Public Expression Activities, Providing for Cultification, Providing for Severability, Providing for Conflicts, and Providing for an Effective Date.
All those, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like, sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right, we now move to the quasi-judicial portion of our meeting, and Commissioners, I'll need you to make your disclosures. I would do so as well in the event I have to vote on a tie. Commissioner Warren, you ready?
Yes. Just making sure. As to items 10.1 through 10.4, oh, 10.5, I have not had any experte communications, have not received written communications, have not conducted an investigation, have not made a site visit, have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. As to items 10.1 through 10.5, I have not had experte communications, I have not received written communications, I have not conducted an investigation, I have not made a site visit, nor have I received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you very much. President Warren?
Mayor, as to matters 10.1 through 10.5, I have not had experte communications, not received written communications, not conducted an investigation, not made a site visit, I've not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Commissioner Fox?
As to matters 10.1 through 10.5, I have not had experte communications, I have not received written communications, I have not conducted an investigation, I have not made a site visit, I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
As I said, I'll make disclosures in the event I have to vote. As to items 10.1 through 10.5, I have not had experte communications, I have not received written communications, I have not conducted an investigation, I have not made a site visit, I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record. Madam Clerk, can you swear on all witnesses, please?
Would everyone wishing to speak on items 10.1 through 10.5, please stand and raise your right hand? Do you swear that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and not just about the truth?
Thank you. Item 10.1, public hearing and second reading of ordinance Number 5023-22, Designating the Florida Public Utilities Company (FPUC) Building on the West Palm Beach Register of Historic Places.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Anne Hamilton, Historic Preservation Planner, presenting this item. This is a second reading of this ordinance, however, because it's been nearly a year since you last heard, I thought I'd give a quick refresher on the building that you'll be voting to designate. This building is located at 401 South Dixie, it's known as the Florida Public Utilities Company Building. You may know it as Johann's Joe, that's the main tenant in the building. And the request is for designation as a historic structure. Here are some original plans of the building. It was built in 1965 by architect Marion Sims Wyeth, and a historic photo. It does meet all of the applicable codes, and the Historic Preservation Board recommended approval at the October 25th, 2022 meeting with the following findings of fact, which you can see here. And staff is recommending approval of ordinance 5023-22 on second reading. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments? All right, we do have a card from Kent Wimmering, who says he does not wish to speak, but he is supportive of this item. All right, if there are no questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance Number 5023-22 on second reading.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, discussion. Hearing done, Madam Clerk, can you read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance Number 5023-22, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, Designating 401 South Dixie Highway as a historic site on the West Palm Beach Register of Historic Places, as further legally described herein, providing a severability clause, providing a conflicts clause, providing an effective date, and for other purposes.
Thank you very much. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like, sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 10.2... Item ten-point-two, public hearing and second reading of ordinance number five-zero-seven-seven-dash-twenty-three, designating the Locust House, twelve-twenty-five North Sappadilla Avenue, on the West Palm Beach Register of Historic Places.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Ann Hamilton, Historic Preservation Planner. This is a second reading. There have been no changes since first reading.
Very good. Thank you. Comments, questions, Commissioners? Hearing done. We do have a card on this item from Kent Wimmering. He does not wish to speak, but he supports this ordinance. All right, very good. If there are no questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number five-zero-seven-seven-dash-twenty-three on second reading.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion, hearing done. Madam Clerk, can you read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance number five-zero-seven-seven-dash-two-three, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, designating twelve-twenty-five North Sappadilla Avenue as a historic site on the West Palm Beach Register of Historic Places, providing a conflicts clause, providing an effective date, and for other purposes.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like, sign. Hearing no opposition. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item ten-point-three, public hearing of resolution number three-one-four-dash-twenty-three regarding a request by Michelle Quattara of Urban Design Studio on behalf of City Place Retail LLC for the approval of a major plan development amendment to the City Place Commercial Plan Development, CPD, to amend the Rosemary Square, City Place, CPD Master Sign Plan to update definitions and to clarify provisions regarding tenant sign criteria and locations.
Evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Tyler Woolsey, Urban Design Studio, on behalf of the applicant, have a brief presentation for you this evening. If I can figure out which one saved us.
Can someone help me, please?
Oh, no. Thank you.
All right, hold on before you start. Okay, now it's on our screens. Okay, very good.
Good. All righty. Thank you very much. As introduced, here to briefly present the City Place Master Sign Plan Amendments. As you all are likely familiar, this is a living document that guides the sign regulations throughout City Place, otherwise known as Rosemary Square. The request before you tonight is minor amendments to that sign code, specifically some changes in Exhibit B, the definitions, minimum requirements, and procedures for signage, as well as Exhibit C, which specifically guides the regulations for tenant signage throughout the square. I will start off by saying that we've worked diligently with staff and closely with staff over the last year as this application has evolved, and they are recommending support of these modifications, as did Planning Board back in October. So you see here, I won't run through it, but you see there is a long history of this living document and amendments to this document. This is natural as, you know, retail changes, the market changes, sign modifications are, you know, commonplace throughout, and signs evolve to, you know, what the current style requires. And so in order to account for that, we made some minor changes. First, you see here in definitions, adding requirements and specificity to awning, canopy requirements, adding in a definition for trellis relating that to the canopy requirements, adding in a new pergola definition and similar requirements there. And so essentially, what you're seeing here is us more specifically defining the structures with which signs can be attached to and what requirements accompany those specific structures. Here, you see some simple changes to the sign types that are permitted. So this is getting, you know, one layer more detailed. Specifically, we modified sign type one, which is called in this sign code, and that is really primary wall signs. And so things that you see here, examples of, those are things like your fascia arcade, your canopy, and your arcade signage, pergolas, awnings, so forth. And then as well as updating the sign type one-B description, as mentioned before, to define and describe canopies and pergola structures that signs could be attached to. Going another layer, we specified some more mounting options, specifically for those canopy and pergola signs that were just mentioned, for those added definitions, as well as specifying arcade identity signage. And again, we added some definitions and some clarity to the temporary construction sign allowances throughout City Place, specifically allowing for temporary signage on construction fencing in a manner that you see here, and allowing for that temporary construction fencing with those signs to occur along the FEC Railroad right-of-way. Here you see an added definition and specification for a vertical building sign, which you see two examples of there. And so here we were, this is an existing sign type that is permitted, we are modifying to allow it for storefront type-one tenants in the City Place. Here before you, you see the amendment standards for a minor amendment in the city. In working with staff, we comply with each of these, and I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions for the applicant before we bring staff up? Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Schneider?
Good evening. For the record, Eric Schneider, Principal Planner. I have nothing to add. I do have a PowerPoint presentation if you would like to see it, but there's nothing really more, and we support the case, and as the applicant said, the Planning Board did recommend approval.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions for staff? All right, hearing done. I will, any comments? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number three-fourteen-dash-twenty-three.
There's a second paragraph there.
This motion is based upon the factual testimony presented, the application submitted, the staff report, the recommendation of the Planning Board, and the findings of the amendment is consistent with the comprehensive plan and complies with the standards found in Section ninety-four-dash-thirty-two of the city's zoning and land development regulations.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion, hearing done. Madam Clerk, can you read the or, no, it's a resolution. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like, sign. Hearing no opposition. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item ten-point-four, a request by John Schmidt of Schmidt Nichols on behalf of Center Park Mastermind LLC for a major amendment to the Center Park CPD with waivers from the city's zoning and land development regulations to allow for the construction of a thirteen-story, one-hundred-fifty-five-thousand-seven-hundred-sixty-five-square-foot office building on property located at fifteen-forty-five Center Park Drive North.
Mayor, Commissioners, thank you. Cameron Ennis with Schmidt Nichols for the record on behalf of the applicant. So tonight, we're presenting the Contemporary, which is a thirteen-story office building in Center Park DRI. Just a quick overview of what we're gonna be going over. We'll have the location map first, future land use and zoning, our requests, the site and landscape plans. We'll look, take a look at the architecture, and we'll go over the waivers that are before you tonight. So just looking at where the site is located, we are west of I-95, on the east side of Australian Avenue, just north of Belvedere Road. You can see the site there in red, and we are located within the Center Park DRI. Taking a closer look, you can see the site here is one-point-two-seven acres, currently has an existing one-story office. And as you can see with this blue here, the site is actually a bit of a peninsula located between Australian Avenue and three canals there. And we'll get into that further a little bit later. So just taking a look at the future land use, it's currently commercial and is part of the Center Park DRI, as I mentioned. We're not proposing to change that. The same is true for the zoning, currently has commercial plan development zoning, and it's not proposed to be changed. Taking a look at the existing site, there's currently a one-story, twelve-thousand-square-foot office building on it. And our requests tonight are a major plan development amendment to redevelop the site with a thirteen-story, one-hundred-fifty-six-thousand-square-foot office building. And we have three waivers before you for setback reductions. So taking a look at the site plan here, you can see the building area here is one-hundred-fifty-six-thousand-square-feet, as I mentioned, in thirteen stories. We have four-hundred-forty-six parking spaces, which is one over the minimum requirement. You can also see in blue here those canals that surround the property. Here you can see the open space that surrounds the property. We do meet the sixty percent minimum or maximum building coverage, and we also have thirty-seven percent landscape area that we're proposing. Taking a look at our landscape plan, we are saving quite a few trees on here, so there are forty-eight existing mature canopy trees, and you can see some examples of those at the bottom of the screen here. And we're proposing to preserve thirty-one of those and relocate four of them. Let's take a look at the architecture here. So this is the property, looking at it from the south. So as if you were driving into the site from Center Park Drive North. Here it is, looking at it from across the canal to the west. And here it is, if you were looking at it from Australian Avenue. So just a refresher before I get into the waivers, just a refresher on the Center Park DRI. So the Center Park DRI was originally approved in nineteen-eighty-five, and it was approved with vested concurrency for various uses. So I'll go through those right now. It was originally approved for five-hundred-seventy-two-thousand-square-feet of office, of which, you can see in blue here, three-hundred-thirty-thousand-square-feet of that has been built. Here in red, you can see it was approved for three-hundred-eighty-two total hotel rooms, of which two-hundred-thirty-five have been built. And finally, we have five-hundred-seventy-approved dwelling units that are vested, and four-hundred-seventy-seven have been either built or approved, you can see in green. So, and finally, twenty-thousand-square-feet of commercial was approved, but none of that has been built. So in the case, in our case, we have an office development with our request tonight, and so there's two-hundred-forty-one-thousand-square-feet of office space available to build. And as you saw in this image here, a lot of the DRI has already been built out. So ultimately, the only place to do that is to go up and with redevelopment. So that's what we're here to do tonight. So that gets us into the waivers. So the city's requirement for setbacks is, for front setbacks, you have to have twenty feet of setback plus six feet for every ten feet of an additional height above sixty feet. The same is true for side setbacks. It's fifteen feet standard plus six feet of additional setback for every ten feet in height above sixty feet. So in the case of our thirteen-story building, we require ninety-two feet along Australian Avenue and eighty-seven feet along the sides on the west and east side. Our proposed setbacks are thirteen feet at this little corner here along Australian, and then five feet along the west side, and sixteen feet along the east side. And again, a lot of this stems from staff support for urban development context, which try to bring the building up to the street and create more of a landmark structure that meets the street. So those are our technical setback requirements, but what are the actual setbacks? The actual setbacks here due to the site being a peninsula, as I mentioned, there's no more than, nearest building is no closer than a hundred feet, as you can see here. These are the dimensions to the nearest properties to the site. There's also a podium design. So the lower portion of the building is eighty-eight feet, and that is the podium. And here you can see the one-hundred-seventy-five-foot portion that goes up to one-hundred-seventy-five feet is set back further from the street, and that is the tower portion. You can get a view of that here with this little L shape on the left side. You have the eighty-eight-foot podium, and you have the portion of the tower that reaches one-hundred-seventy-five feet. So the Center Park DRI, as I mentioned, was created as a suburban development. The city today promotes a urban development pattern where buildings should be closer to the street and address the street, and parking and circulation should be hidden. There's also been other waivers approved in the DRI. At fifteen-hundred Center Park Boulevard, there were four waivers approved, and eighteen-eighty-five Center Park Drive, there were five waivers approved. And these were also the result of that urban development pattern that we see with bringing the building up to the street. And finally, there are other tall office towers in Center Park. Fourteen-hundred Center Park Boulevard was built in the nineteen-eighties, and it is ten stories. It has a forty-five-foot front setback currently. With current code, it would have to be approximately sixty feet or greater. Same thing with the side setback. It has thirty-five-foot side setback, and with current code, it'd have to be fifty-five feet or greater. And center for code compliance, we meet all of these. And again, with the site plan approvals standards, we meet all of those. We appreciate your consideration of approval. We're in agreement with conditions one through six on the staff report. We have support from staff, and we received unanimous recommendation of approval with, from Planning Board. Request this testimony be entered into the record, and our team is here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the applicant before we bring up staff? Commissioner Fox.
Thank you so much. It looks like a beautiful project. I'm wondering if you can go back to, I think it was slide twelve or thirteen, where you were talking about the square footage, I guess, allowed in the DRI and what has already been built?
Yep.
I just want to understand, were you, you're not asking for building more than is already allowed?
Correct. Yeah, correct. We're
So this is just an FYI, this sort of the screen?
Yeah. Yeah, we'll be utilizing part of this two-hundred-fifty, or forty-one-thousand-square-feet.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Very good. Any other questions for the applicant before staff? Okay, let's bring staff up to...
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. For the record, Kevin DeFrank, Senior Planner with the Development Services Department, and I will be presenting staff's findings and recommendations for the subject agenda item, which involves resolution number three-one-five-dash-twenty-three, and that is to approve the planned development, major amendment, and waivers requests as the applicant has presented before you. And I must point out, as identified in the staff report, that staff does not object to the waiver requests. And staff finds that the request complies with the amendment standards and the site design qualitative development standards found in the city's zoning and land development regulations. And on the seventeenth of October, the Planning Board voted for a recommendation of approval with conditions of the subject request, and therefore, staff is recommending an approval of resolution number three-one-five-dash-twenty-three. That concludes my presentation, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions for staff? All right, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number three-fifteen-dash-twenty-three based upon the application submitted, the staff report, factual testimony, the recommendation of the Planning Board, the findings that the request complies with the comprehensive plan, and the standards in Section ninety-four-dash-thirty-two-A and ninety-four-dash-thirty-five-C of the city's zoning and land development regulations.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion, hearing done. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like, sign. Hearing no opposition. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item ten-point-five, resolution number three-twenty-five-dash-twenty-three, a request by Nora Dorish of Schmidt Nichols on behalf of Scuba Club LLC for a replat of the subject property consisting of approximately one-point-seven-three acres located at forty-seven-fourteen North Flagler Drive.
Mayor, Commissioners, thank you. Cameron Ennis with Schmidt Nichols on behalf of the applicant for the record. I'm here in Nora's place today. So today we have a minor replat in front of you for the Alba, and I'll just get right into it. So the location of the property is between forty-sixth and forty-seventh Street on the east side of North Flagler Drive. It's one-point-seven-three acres, and it has one-point-four-three acres of upland and fifty, or point-five-one acres submerged. The property is currently split on property appraisers. It's two parcels currently, and that is the subject of our request tonight, is to combine these in a minor replat. So the site's currently vacant. On the east side is the intercoastal. The west, they're single and multifamily. And then north, they're single family, and to the south, they're multifamily, and you can see in these images what the site looks like. So a bit of history, there's a current approval on this for a twenty-one-story, fifty-five multifamily unit project. It has a five-story parking garage, sixteen floors of residential, and a total of one-hundred-seventy-five-thousand-square-feet. We also have staff recommendation of approval of a two-hundred-twenty-two-foot residential dock that was part of a separate application that's running concurrent. So tonight's request, we're looking at a minor replat of the property. You can see the plat here. This replat brings the property into a single lot instead of two, as it is currently, and it was a condition of approval of that previous twenty-one-story residential approval that I mentioned. They have to get this prior to building permit, so that's why we're here tonight. It meets all the standards in ninety-four-three-four-two-A through K. And with that, we thank you for your time and appreciate your consideration of approval. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the applicant before we bring staff up? Okay, staff? Okay, staff?
All right, good evening, everyone. Uh, Mayor, Commissioners, Jeremy Swaby, Planning and Zoning Senior Planner. I'll be presenting during the follow-up presentation for Resolution three-two-five dash two-three, which is a request for approval of a minor subdivision replat of property located at four-seven-one-four North Flagler. Uh, as stated, the site is located on the east side of North Flagler, uh, generally north of Forty-Sixth Street and south of Forty-Seventh Street, as you can see in the aerial. And the subject property, which is currently va- um, vacant, as they stated, is one-point-seven-three acres. Uh, so they're looking to, uh, uh, for the purpose of, um, replating the parcels identified on the survey shown, uh, to create a new plat which establishes one new, uh, parcel total in one-point-seven-three acres. The proposed plat complies with the subdivision review requirements of section ninety-four dash four-four of the city's zoning and land development regulations, and the subdivision general design standards of section ninety-four dash three-four-two of the city's zoning and land development regulations. Therefore, staff recommends approval of Resolution three-two-five dash two-three. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions for staff? All right, um, no other questions. Commissar, I entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution number fi- three-two-five dash two-three, creating a plat entitled Alba Residences. This motion is based upon the app- application submitted, staff report, factual testimony, and the finding that the request complies with the comprehensive plan and the standards in section ninety-four dash three-four-two of the city's zoning and land development regulations.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like, sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Uh, we now enter into, uh, an appeals portion of our meeting. Uh, item eleven-point-one, Appeal of the Historic Preservation Board's Decision in Case Number Two-Two-Dash-Thirty-seven A, Denying the Request to Replace Original Wood Siding at the Historically Contributing Structure Located at Two-Two-One Greenwood Drive. Madam City Attorney, do you kind of want to, want to give us, uh, an idea of how, uh, this is going to proceed, please?
Yes, Mayor and Commissioners. This is an appeal from the Historic Preservation Board's decision by the property owner. They will go first and present their case, followed by the case of the Historic Preservation Planner. And what you will do is you will sit as if you are the Historic Board. I've passed out to you the standards that you will apply in deciding whether or not the proposed, um, request should be granted or denied. And the Code Section is ninety-four dash forty-nine C-three, and you have those standards in front of you, so you will listen, uh, like you do most of your other quasidicial proceedings. And if the standards are met, then you will grant. If they are not, you will deny.
Very good.
Mayor, I have a question about the process.
Yes.
It's, uh, Madam City Attorney, I didn't see it here in the backup information, but I feel like I saw it. We discussed it somewhere else. Is it called de novo, the proceedings, and can you please describe that?
Yes, and that's what I just described without saying the word de novo. De novo means, in, um, legal terms, a review anew. So you're going to sit, as the Historic Preservation Board did, and hear the case new. You'll hear, uh, from the applicant and then from the city. Thank you.
Any other questions before we proceed? Okay, thank you.
Do we need to be sworn in as well?
Uh, yes, absolutely. So, uh, Madam Clerk, can you swear in all witnesses to the, to the appeal, please?
Would everyone wishing to speak on item eleven-point-one please stand and raise your right hand? Do you swear that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Good evening. Um, my name is Polly Daughtry. I am an architect. I'm here on behalf of Mr. and Mrs. Hughes. They live at two-twenty-one Greenwood Drive, and these pictures are of the front and the side. And so this, um, this project is in Prospect Park, Park. So, um, you can see on the image, there's a lot of different types of historical styles there. There's Mediterranean Revival. There's Colonial Revival. Um, so it's a nice mix of historic structures. This house is considered frame vernacular. It was built in nineteen thirty-nine. The closest comparison we found in the National Registry for the Neighborhood was the, um, picture on the left. So it's very similar in style. Um, it was called the Alfred and Lucy Jackson House. So these are typically wood siding. These typically have, um, they're shown as you see it. So these are, um, existing, these are pre-construction. They were having the pool installed at the time. But you can see in the top row, the primary residence, and then the bottom row is the guest house. So what, basically, when we first came to the Historic Board, we had asked, um, for some modifications to the, the residence. The biggest modification was in the, in the bottom left-hand corner. You can see that balcony. We are taking that off, and we're building a new balcony and covered porch attached to the main house. It makes a little more sense because it's off the main, um, the, the master suite, and it's off the, um, the lower-level living area. Um, we did, as part of this application, it was, uh, stipulated that we would replace and repair rotted siding as we found it. So these are plans of those renovations. You can see the primary residence on the left, the guest house on the right. So there are modifications to the interior as well, which Historic doesn't usually decide on those, but we show them anyways. Uh, second-floor modifications, you can see the, the balcony that, that's attached to the primary residence was added. Roof plan. And then these are elevations of the structure. So again, you can see that deck attached, and again, the notes in here show, um, replacement due to rot and damage. So what we found as we started construction was there was a lot of damage. And it, you know, we've, like, we've done a lot of these projects as architects. We've, we've seen this. You start to open up walls, you start to find damage, and there's, there is a bit of damage. This was a lot more than expected. So literal whole sides of the building have to be replaced. And, um, it's, it's quite a bit of a renovation. And what is being required is that we replace it with wood siding. So these are all images. So what we are requesting is to replace the wood siding with something more durable, something that's going to last a bit longer. We're proposing either the hardy board siding, which you'll see on the left, or the horizontal stucco siding. We're trying to maintain that same character of the house, um, but something that's going to last a bit longer. These are all historic homes, not in West Palm, but throughout the country that have been, uh, replaced with the hardy siding. So, um, one of the issues with wood siding is that you have rot, you have a lot of water damage. With the hardy board bar- hardy board siding, which you can see, you can see the center one here is the wood, wood look. Um, the centerpiece. Um, it mimics that natural wood, and it's something that, like, you can't get with an, a vinyl siding or a metal siding. It's, has that historic look, it has that historic feel, and it's made with a fiber cement, so it's very durable compared to wood. It's insect-resistant, fire-resistant. It's not going to warp or rot. It's, um, and it's more sustainable. It, hardy board lasts for fifty years. We're really trying to keep, um, building materials out of the landfills. So since, like, ninety percent, according to the E P- EPA, ninety percent of our waste that's in the landfills is due to construction waste. And, um, it's low in toxicity. It's made of cement, sand, wood, fiber, and water. And since this resilience and this ever-changing climate is a priority in the city, um, hardy board is more resistant to flood and, flood and wood damage. So I'm going to pass this over to Tyson. He's the contractor, and he's also going to talk a little more about the damage they found.
Good evening, everyone. Um, so the main part for me on this is we weren't really touching
Could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Sorry, Tyson White is my name, uh, general contractor. Um, so quite a lot of this building, we were not touching. Um, you can see where my arrow is here. We're replacing some windows. Two, two single-hung windows for just one. Over here, making a bigger sliding door. This area here is a prime example of an area I'm not touching at all, but this all needs to be replaced. Um, another part of the difficulty with this particular cedar siding is that it's a six-inch board, which is fine, uh, but it's a quarter inch in thickness on its thickest end. Most board, most cedar siding boards these days come at eleven-sixteenths thickness. So we actually have to either profile our own cedar boards or buy an eight-inch cedar board, cut it down to six inches to match the profile of the house. So either way, it's quite a lot of waste for s- to kind of use the cedar when we have a very good opportunity at this time. We're replacing vast majority of the house. It's an opportunity for us to go towards a more sustainable product. But from the street, the untrained eye is not going to know the difference. And I think I'm going to pass over to Noel, who's the owner of the house.
Um, good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Noel Hughes, for the record, and I, along with my husband Jim Hughes, um, are the owners at two-two-one Greenwood Drive. And, um, I know I've, I've said it to some of you, but not all of you. I, um, or we moved down from Connecticut, and, uh, we, where we lived in a historic neighborhood in an eighteen-thirty-eight, um, farmhouse. So we are very respectful of, um, historical buildings and historic neighborhoods. And so we, along, one of the reasons we chose, um, Polly and Tyson is they have worked with historic houses before. So we, it was important to us to respect and to maintain the historical integrity of the house we bought. It's one of the things that attracted us to it. So, um, you know, that is our goal as well. We're just hopeful that we can use a more sustainable and, um, you know, affordable and, uh, uh, product that will also maintain the, um, integrity for many years to come. So, thank you for your time and understanding.
All right, thank you. All right, so that, though, we're hearing now from, uh, is that the end of their, their case? All right, so we're now hearing from, uh, the Historical Preservation people?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Anne Hamilton, Historic Preservation Planner, presenting this case at two-two-one Greenwood Drive for an appeal. Uh, as the applicant stated, this location is in the Prospect-Southland Park Historic District and was built in nineteen thirty-nine. The request is for replacement of existing wood siding with stucco to imitate wood siding. Uh, as the applicant indicated, evidently they are now interested in also pursuing a hardy board siding. Um, however, as I'll explain, uh, the design guidelines for historic preservation only permit, uh, replacement in kind with wood siding. Uh, these are the photos that the applicant showed of the house, um, in its existing condition, uh, which does show some rot on the existing wood siding, uh, which I can show you here. So as an overview, the design guidelines for West Palm Beach, uh, which is incorporated, um, into our ordinance, uh, state that when deteriorated, damaged, or lost features of a historic building such as wood siding need repair or replacement, it is best to use historic materials. This would be wood siding. Original materials are an important aspect of the historic character of a structure, and the use of inappropriate substitute materials can cause a radical change in a building's appearance and can even cause extensive physical damage over time. Most importantly, the wholesale use of substitute, substitute building materials can raise questions concerning the historic integrity of the building. One of the character-defining features of the structure is its wood siding. Only four circumstances warrant the consideration of substitute materials. The unavailability of historic materials, wood siding is still readily available today. The unavailable, availability of skilled craftsmen, this is not the case. Inherent flaws in the original materials, this is not the case, or code-required changes, also not the case. Old-growth wood is no longer available due to widespread overuse in construction and is much more resistant to rot, water damage, and termite growth than new-growth wood. This is what's currently on the house. The West Palm Beach Design Guidelines state that when old-growth wood is part of a structure, it should be retained if at all possible. This is on page one-eighteen. The Design Guidelines also specify that cracked or rotted clapboards or shingles can be replaced one at a time without having to re-side the entire structure. The board size, width of exposure, length, and trim details must be considered when repairing or replacing wood siding. The Guidelines further specify, do not reconstruct a facade with new material in order to achieve a uniform or improved appearance, and do not replace or rebuild major portions of exterior walls that could be repaired and that would make the building essentially new construction. This is what the applicant is proposing to do when re-siding the entire building in stucco or, um, fiber cement. Uh, the use of fiber cement siding, one of the brands is hardy board, probably the most popular, is not recommended for historic properties. Uh, it's, we typically approve it in new construction or for new additions on historic buildings, but it is not, um, an approved replacement mer- material on contributing historic structures. Um, if it is used, um, we would require a smooth finish, not a woodgrain finish, as the applicant has shown here. The exposed, uh, face of the siding should match the dimensions of the existing wood or asbestos siding. This is wood siding. Um, and it should never be applied over historic siding because it will hold moisture against the historic materials and cause more rot than original wood siding would. Um, and the applicant also has proposed, uh, using stucco to mimic siding. Uh, we treat this similarly to fiber cement siding, um, and typically only permit it on new constructions and additions in historic districts. These are standard conditions, uh, that we apply to, um, many different historic projects, uh, that we see. So we believe that, uh, as you have, uh, provided for you, we believe that this does not meet, uh, the Secretary of the Interior Standards, six or nine, um, particularly regarding the replacement of deteriorated historic features and new, um, alterations to properties, and are therefore recommending denial. Uh, we are supportive of the applicant certainly removing the existing siding, um, retaining any siding that is damaged or rotted, or not retaining any sided, siding that is damaged, retaining any that is not rotted beyond repair, and allowing them to replace with wood siding and equivalent width and profile to match the original and visual appearance. Thank you. Any questions?
Is that the conclusion of your case?
Yes, and we did receive several public comments that have been provided to you, um, at your desk, um, that are in support of the applicant.
Okay, um, now we'll get to questions from, uh, the, uh, Commissioners. Commissioner Ward and Commissioner Lambert and Commissioner Fox.
Thank you so much. This may be a question for our City Attorney, and I was reviewing the Code Section ninety-four dash four-nine, and, and I didn't notice you referencing that. So which standards are we supposed to be reviewing? Because you, you referenced a lot of points and, and
So what, what, the standards that you apply are the standards that are in front of you. Those are called the Secretary of Interior Standards. What, uh, staff has presented are guidelines that are also followed in interpreting and applying those standards. They're guidelines. They're not the standards themselves, but guidelines that you can consider in applying the standards that you have.
Thank you. Mayor, follow-up?
Yes.
Okay, um, and so for your purposes, when you were reviewing this, so they didn't present the hardy board at the Historic Preservation, but you're saying even if they had presented it, your, your decision would have remained the same?
Correct. We treat them essentially similarly.
So I just, I guess I'm trying to understand if the point is to rev- to view things and say, hey, this looks historic, and, and other than going up and touching it, why harding boin- bor- board? I understand the stucco, and maybe you can make it look like that, but you said that it's not approved if you can't, you know, that's just not approved, but you can't tell the difference. But then you also said that even if it was, you'd have them do a smooth finish versus the one that looks like wood that would match the original. So I'm just curious where that rationale comes from.
Um, correct. So actually, the smooth finish, um, replicates original, um, wood more closely than the woodgrain that they've shown here. Um, that is a requirement that we use typically on new construction buildings. So we do allow the use of hardy board in historic districts. We don't allow it on, um, existing contributing structures. Um, so that's why I guess we do have, um, a provision for the use of hardy board. That's why I've, I've cited it here, um, but it, in this case, doesn't apply necessarily.
For the follow-up?
Well, I have more questions, but I didn't know if you wanted to go, because they're not really
Yeah, let me move down, and then we can circle that up.
Okay. So we now look at the Code Section. It says distinctive features, finishes, and construction techniques are examples of craftsmanship that characterize a historic property shall be preserved. Again, I say, what is your characteristic if you cannot tell the difference between the, the fake wood and the real wood, other than going up and, and touching it?
Um, so generally, in, in our view, um, the hardy board doesn't read the exact same as the wood. Uh, you, you would be able to see some difference, um, Uh, you, you would be able to see some difference, um, you know, kind of the texture of the material will be different. Will you be able to see, you know, directly from the street, um, maybe you wouldn't exactly identify that it's a different material, but you would probably be able to identify that it's not the original wooden material.
Okay. And then, um, as far as the second, the subsection F, where it says where the severity of deterioration requires replacement of a distinctive feature, the new feature shall match the old and design, color, texture, and other visual qualities, and where possible materials. Where possible, is that a reasonable standard? Is it, you know, we are balancing, obviously, I'm supportive historic, I'm surrounded by historic homes in my neighborhood. Um, but there's also, you know, preservation when it comes to environmental issues, finding the wood, sourcing the wood, and also making sure that our residents aren't paying costly when there is an alternative. So I'm just curious, what is that standard? Is it reasonable?
So, so I believe that the way that where possible is intended to be, um, treated, it's in further detail in the Design Guidelines, but that's more intended for situations where, for example, a house has asbestos siding. We're not going to replace, require someone to replace their asbestos siding with asbestos because, um, you know, that wouldn't be a, a reasonable requirement. That's not available today. It's not a good building material. Um, but in this case, where wood is still, um, you know, a, a building material that is used widely, that is widely available, um, I, I believe that, you know, it, it's a little bit more reasonable to, to request that people do replace their wood siding in kind.
My final question is, just to confirm, and maybe it's from the applicant. So if we were to move forward and agree to the substitute material, it would be automatically that they're replacing everything, not just the, what we, they've noticed is damaged?
Um, I believe that's what the applicant is requesting. I would ask for her to clarify, maybe.
Yes, it would be for the entire residence, since there's a significant amount.
Okay, including that trim part, cause you mentioned that trim is required for the wood, or?
Um, like the, the decorative trim on the front? I mean, we can't do that in hardy at all. It has to be, I mean, it has to be milled. Fortunately, it's not like, some of the houses have all this ginger breading, but it's, it's just around the front, so that would have to be fabricated.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. I'm glad to have an, an attorney go before me and ask, those are all the questions I had as well, but she asked them much more eloquently. You know, really, I guess what I am struggling with is, I, I understand, and I'm reading the Secretary of Interior standards, and that the overarching goal is maintaining the style and character of, um, you know, the historic property and to preserve that, but also, you know, ensuring that this is a safe, structurally sound, sustainable, um, project. So, um, now, I, Commissioner Ward asked all the right questions, and I'm, I'm just, um, still contemplating the answers. So thank you so much for those answers.
Commissioner Fox?
Thank you. I think most of my questions were answered also. I guess, um, one question I have is, when is the last time, or when did we update the guidelines that you're referencing? You know, I think this is maybe the second or third time that something similar has come before us that, my question is that, you know, we have so many different environmental issues that maybe weren't so prevalent, however, many years ago. And so while I understand that, you know, we have so much character in these historic properties, and I don't want to lose the character by, you know, making a decision that then, you know, every home comes to us and says that they want to make changes, and then, you know, it changes the entire historic character. But on the other hand, you know, looking at some of these building materials that aren't as sustainable, aren't as weatherproof, you know, should we be looking at guidelines for our city, for our own benefit, just for the future of what we know is, you know, the new norm, I think? In terms of some of these guidelines, like to tell someone to put one of these kind of materials on that we know isn't going to last very long, maybe even less so than it used to because of all the weather elements. I mean, should we be re, I guess, re-establishing some of the guidelines for, you know, the new environment we're in? And I guess, when is the last time that we have looked at the guidelines for that kind of thing?
Um, yes, a great question, actually. Um, so our current Design Guidelines do date to two thousand five. They are, um, quite old. Uh, the good news is, we actually have, I believe, fifty thousand dollars in the budget, uh, in the coming year to update our Design Guidelines. So I think sustainability is probably one of the top, um, areas of concern for historic that we certainly will want to incorporate into a new Design Guideline handbook when we do come out with that. Um, but we are still in the beginning stages of that process.
And these are the guidelines that were in place at the time this matter came up for consideration?
Yes.
And presumably, the owners had notice of the guidelines?
Uh, yes, and they, they did originally, um, on the first round of approval. Uh, it, this came before us in May of twenty twenty-two and June of twenty twenty-two. They did agree to replace this siding with wood. Um, I think they, after further work, decided to come back, um, in September of this year to the Historic Preservation Board for reconsideration of that particular matter.
So they initially agreed?
Yes.
And then now they're asking to no longer be held to that agreement?
Yes.
Interesting. Well, let me go to President Warren first. She has another chance.
Thank you. I think we all have the same questions, and it's in reference to, um, item six, um, the Secretary of Interior's standards. And where I'm, where I'm struggling is where, where I'm looking at where they've met so many of these points here, where, um, it's, it will be the same in, in design as the original, correct?
Um, largely, yes.
So largely, it will be the same in design, and the, the differences would not be significant enough to, to the eye that we would be able to say that there is a compromise in the historic aesthetic?
It's difficult to say. I think it would depend on how trained the eye of the person looking at it would be. Um, for example, looking at the, the samples that they've provided here, um, is probably the best way to judge.
So the, what they're proposing would match, in my opinion, in design. Color would be, uh, made to match the existing color. The texture of it, other than touching it, but the visual texture would be quite similar in observation. And there are no, there are no other compromises, other than the fact that we know that the material itself is different than the original, uh, uh, material that was used.
So yes, it will be visually similar. Um, I, I don't want to say that it will be visually identical. I think that's why we do have that distinction in the Design Guidelines. Um, I think further another reason that maybe we don't, um, always recommend hardy board as a replacement material is it's fairly new. Um, obviously, people are becoming more open to it as a replacement material on historic structures, but I think there are still concerns about how it does age visually. I know that, um, you know, certainly it's a much higher quality product than, say, vinyl siding. Um, but I don't believe that it's been on the market, uh, long enough. Uh, other historic preservation programs are only starting to allow it, um, in historic districts as well.
So is it your opinion that wood always matches, that the grain of wood is always the same grain of wood, if it's the same type of tree?
It's easier, I believe, to, um, custom mill wood, uh, to exactly match, uh, what would have been on the building than it would be to buy a product such as hardy plank, um, in a matching width and profile. Yes.
Okay, let's go back around. Commissioner Ward?
Um, too, I just wanted to point a clarification, because that was a good point, Mayor, but I thought that from my discussion with the applicant before this, that it was, they came, they agreed, but then they realized they had much more deterioration and damage to the property than what they had thought they had when they first came to you. I don't know if that's a question for them or for you, whether you remember, but I thought that that was the kind of change of circumstance where they came back and said, hey, uh, she's, I don't know. Um, yeah, I believe she can probably address that better.
Yes, that was the case. We, we came in full, fully intent to go and replace everything, or not to replace everything, just to fix as we needed the wood siding. And then, and that's why it was like last year we came in, and then we came back this year was because we started opening things up. And that's, that's the issue with historic, is that you always open things up and you find a lot more rot. But again, Tyson and myself, we tried to, um, make sure the, the owner was prepared for that. They just weren't prepared for quite how, how much there was. And then, and then just one note, um, the siding, we, the intent is, there's three types here. There's the wood, there's the, the, the wood look hardy, and then there's the smooth.
Do you mind holding it while you're pointing at it? I'm sorry, it's just hard to follow with what you're pointing at.
All right, so wood, wood siding, wood look siding, and then, um, the smooth siding. And so our intent, the, the boards that are on the house right now are a very specific size. You, you can't buy it that size right now. So our intent is to make this exactly to match, so it'll be the same size and everything.
And I just had a follow-up.
Did you have a follow-up?
Yes, I did. And what would you, you say that harding is newer, and you really don't know how much it holds up. Um, but in a perfect world, would you prefer stucco or, or harding? Can they make the stucco look like the wood?
Uh, given the choice between the two, absolutely hardy.
Okay.
Um, it looks far more like wood than, uh, stucco to mimic wood does.
Okay, thank you.
But it's not the original?
But it is not the original, correct.
Uh, Commissioner Fox?
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up to something the applicant just said. She's, I think she said that the wood, the size of the wood that's currently on the house is not currently available, so they would have to go, if they went with the exact wood, they would be going with a different sized wood? But if they went with the stucco, they could make the stucco the same size as the wood is there? In other words, the stucco would actually look more like what's there than the new wood that's a different size?
Um, I'll let her answer. I believe she's saying that either the wood or the hardy would have to be, um, custom made to the correct size.
Yeah, the, the, what's, what's on the market right now is wider, so they're going to have to mill everything down. I, Tyson, is that, is the hardy that's available, is it match exactly the house, or do you still have to mill it down?
All right, whatever his answer is, is going to have to be spoken into the mic, because we're creating a record.
So these hardy samples that we've provided, this was pretty last minute, um, I think it was Thursday last week. So I've, this is a purchase straight off the shelf at Home Depot purely as demonstrational purposes. Um, we can get the hardy to match. It's, obviously, I couldn't get it here quick enough for tonight's meeting. Um, but I think we're pretty open to submitting samples.
Did they answer your question?
So basically, e- either the wood or the stucco is going to have to be cut down to match what's on there now?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. Hi, Anne.
Sorry.
Um, so should this board today approve this? What is the process? Because now I'm hearing discussion that what's presented today isn't exactly it. And, you know, one of the things that I think we're discussing is that we want to make sure that whatever is proposed and approved maintains the characteristic of the historic nature of the house. So what, what is that step?
Um, I believe certainly if the commission were to choose to approve this today, um, whether, really, regardless of the material that's chosen, uh, they could certainly specify that staff, um, you know, review and make sure that the correct material, um, at least matches the, the width and profile, uh, of the current siding. Uh, so whether that be wood, whether that be hardy, or, um, stucco.
Does this open a door from a precedent standpoint? You know, if we make this exception, um, in this particular case, uh, doesn't that open the door for, uh, the next person who has, uh, a similar situation to basically say, well, uh, you let them use a different material. I want to use a different material. And there, we, we start going down that slippery slope. Um, you know, a, a historical home, I guess you kind of, uh, take it as you find it. And whatever those issues are, uh, you, you still, in my view, you still need to abide by the guidelines which govern that, and, and though it may be more expensive, um, that, that is, that should not be the governing factor. I certainly re- relate to the discomfort, the fiscal discomfort, but, uh, you, you're dealing with a unique animal here when you're dealing with a historic home. And we, uh, as a city have a, um, a desire, uh, to maintain the integrity, uh, of those homes and, and not use, um, I guess, uh, fiscal convenience, uh, as a, an excuse for getting out of the obligations that are imposed by the guidelines. Uh, if we do that, then I think we open up a door, uh, which could be unfortunate, and we set a precedent that could be unfortunate. Other questions? Madam City Attorney, you, you kind of weigh in?
Certainly. I, I think that it's important to note, this, um, application, like all applications, are decided on a case-by-case basis, based on the exact evidence that's presented to the ma- to, to the application. Um, that said, the Historic Preservation Board is going to continue to deny these type of applications because of its interpretation of, of the, uh, provision subsection F. And if I can help a little bit with that, I can, I can maybe help your, um, application of this. The new features shall match. If we look at Webster's definition of match, um, it's defined as an exact counterpart. So it shall match in design, color, texture, and other visual qualities, and where possible materials. Possible is defined as being within the limits of ability, uh, capacity, or realization. So it shall be the exact counterpart where it's within the limits of ability, uh, capacity, or realization. And that's probably the standard that your Historic Preservation Board is applying when it looks at the Design Guidelines that guide them in applying, um, the applications before them in this particular standard subsection F of ninety-four forty-nine C three. I hope that helps you in, uh, your decision this evening.
Mayor.
Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. There was something, Anne, that you put up on the slides, and it talked about the exceptions. And I don't know if that was part of the guidelines, that is not part of these, um, interior standards, but one of them was where the code requires it. And so I know that in not too distant past, um, we made a change in allowing, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, hurricane, hurricane impact windows, where clearly those were not historic and those were not allowed. But we made a, is it a guideline change that we made? Because clearly, according to Attorney Rothenberg's explanation, that is not an exact match of materials.
Um, yeah, so I think you're, um, kind of hitting on exactly what that is. It was a, a change, you know, that, um, kind of superseded the Design Guidelines. Uh, as we haven't had any, uh, sort of, um, changes to this section of the Design Guidelines, um, this is kind of what we go off of as far as windows. We now go off that window and fenestration policy that you all approved, um, rather than what is in the Design Guidelines which specifically state not to replace original wood windows. Obviously, times has changed, code has changed, um, so we do consider those requests. However, um, again, uh, wood materials still available, uh, still does meet building code. Um, so this wouldn't be something exactly that we would consider to be a code required change.
What, Mayor?
Yes.
It, um, can you talk about the durability of one material versus the other? And I realize that the wood paneling is, um, the more historic, is that prevalent, still prevalent in construction siding?
Um, yes, wood siding is still absolutely used in, in modern construction, uh, today on new builds all the time. Uh, I can think of multiple cases this year, in fact, uh, that went to the Historic Preservation Board, where we did require, um, on contributing structures similar to this, people to replace their siding with wood rather than other materials when they've made the exact same request. Um, obviously, modern wood is not, uh, going to have the same strength as old growth wood. Uh, what's on the house right now is old growth wood and is much higher quality than any sort of wood that you'll get today. Um, uh, cedar material would be better than some other woods. You can get wood that is hardier, certainly. Um, but that's part of the reason, really, that we would prefer to see some of the old growth wood retained. It's more sustainable to keep materials that are already on the building, uh, than to, um, throw them out, even though a, a large portion of the building, it sounds like, is not salvageable. Certainly, there, there are pieces that are. Um, and the, the old wood that is on the building is much better than, uh, you know, a current wood would be. And the, the old wood that is on the building is much better than, you know, a current wood would be. The fiber cement siding, certainly I will give it, it is a very durable product. I don't think it's been on the market long enough for us to know exactly how long it will last. But certainly, it does provide durability. It's, it's much better than, say, a vinyl siding might be that would've been disallowed before.
President Ward.
From what I've heard today, the applicant originally agreed to replace the siding with exactly what existed. And the, the, the size of that, the scope of that work was significantly different than what we're looking at today, correct?
Um, correct. The applicant hasn't provided exact estimates to me, but based on what she's said certainly in this hearing, it does sound like the scope of work has changed.
And Madam Attorney, you stated that each of these, in the event that others pursued this, that it would come before the commission on a case-by-case basis, and that the decision would be made based off of the information that's presented for that unique situation.
That, that is correct. They will, if it ends up here again on an appeal as it relates to wood siding, they certainly would point back to this case and your decision that these materials are an equal substitute. So, you know.
And this is the same guideline that we use when we approve any exception that comes before us as a commission?
You're not really approving exceptions, right? You're looking at the application that's before you and deciding whatever component is being requested, if it's a roof, a window, siding, or other historic components of a building, if it's appropriate or not based on the standards. But if you have another building come to you that's wanting to change all of the wood siding from wood to another wood alternative, and you've decided that that wood alternative meets the standard, they will certainly point back to this decision.
And scope would be a factor?
Scope is not a factor. It's, the, the factor is, is it a piece of material that is a historic significance to the building? And is it being removed? If, if it's just two inches or the entire front, it's still historic material. It's, it's a different cost for the owner or the applicant, but it's, it's a distinctive feature to the building.
And, and even a new case that might be similar, even though it's to be decided upon the four squares of the facts before the historic preservation, could the owner cite an exception from another case as some kind of precedent?
As I said, the, really, the precedent that you're setting is that hardy board, or if that's the material you choose, or the stucco material that you choose, is an appropriate substitution under subsection F. And, and they would point back to that case. Now, you're not going to be required to follow the case, but what you're following is that it's an appropriate substitute under standard F of the Secretary of Interior Standards.
And that's the standard that we would be setting if we did that.
So it's precedent-setting, in, in essence.
So, my name is Melissa Anderson. I'm the attorney that actually sits with the board, so I'm here representing staff. I do wanna say that in sitting with the board, Ann and I have noticed, West Palm Beach is very attractive to people who wanna come buy these historic houses, renovate them. And we have seen a large influx of people coming into West Palm Beach. We're actually going to probably be bringing an ordinance about demolition by neglect. So the precedential value of this ruling will not be lost on people that come in front of the Historic Preservation Board. They're very, the board is, the board, Historic Preservation Board itself is very savvy. Architects, structural engineers, attorneys sit on the board, and they very carefully review these decisions. You are here sitting in your capacity as commissioners, looking at this evidence, trying to decide it. I don't know what the right answer is, but I know that as the attorney sitting for the board, this issue, whatever is decided here today, will be cited by people who come back before the board. I sit with it every month, and they, the staff and the board are very diligent. And I think what we're seeing in West Palm Beach is development from Dade and Broward is, is coming here. And it's getting more and more crowded. And we've had issues actually with people coming in in Flamingo Park and getting approval, and then letting a structure being torn down even though they had approval. So it's a delicate time, I think, for the Historic Preservation Board. I just wanted to put my two cents in there.
And hence, in my view, we need to be even more careful and more diligent about protecting the integrity of these historic structures. Once you, in, in effect, allow that integrity to be tarnished, it's no going back. And therefore, there's one less historical building that is really truly meeting up to the standards that we've tried to establish. And there's only so many left. Any other questions? Yeah, Commissioner Ward, and then Commissioner Lambert, and Commissioner Fox.
And I certainly don't discount the credibility and education behind the people that sit on the historic board. I think that's why we're, I, at least me personally, I was asking so many questions, 'cause I saw the vote seven to zero. I'm just also looking at standards. And, and Kim, if you could just, where possible, you looked at the definition of that. There were three words you used, because that's where, really, F is where I'm looking at. And, you know, where possible, the materials. So what was the possible?
So I, I looked up just quickly on, on the computer Merriam-Webster dictionary online, and it defined as being within the limits of ability, capacity, or realization.
Okay.
It's possible.
'Cause I think the issue that the attorney that sits on the board that was talking about, I think is a separate issue altogether. I think that you can preserve, just like Commissioner Lambert said, when it comes to windows and, and being prepared for storms, while also making sure that people are actually incentivized to buy and restore and preserve these homes where visually it looks the same, and we're still driving around seeing these historic homes. It would be the same as when we've looked at the shotgun homes, where it's like you wanna build something that's gonna look and last nice, not something that just because, say, it's a source, let's, let's keep it there. But let's make sure that it lasts and that someone is enjoying their home and not spending all of their money just to preserve something when there is something else that can do the job and not disincentivize people from moving into these historic areas, which I think is that balance that we, that we have. And so I am, it is hard to look at this and go, "Wow, this is a seven-zero vote." But when I look at these standards, I, I feel like it actually has been met by them.
Well, and...
Commissioner Lambert.
Before I ask my question, one thing that we clarify too is that we're sitting de novo. So I don't think that it matters what the vote was before. Is that right, Attorney Rothenberg?
You are the board making the decision anew.
But I do, as well as Commissioner Ward, appreciate the, the education and the background of, of the historic board. And I think, Ann, something that you mentioned earlier, that our guidelines haven't been updated since, since two thousand and five, I think that that's definitely something that, you know, I would wanna revisit and learn more about the process and our involvement in that. I do take a little bit of exception to the attorney's comments that, you know, yes, I think there are a lot of people moving here, but I have also heard from many locals who are, who struggle with some of these parameters and, and some of the things that we're struggling with here today that make it prohibitive to, you know, to want to move into these historic neighborhoods. And, and so I think that while the architects and those with historic preservation experience are looking from that lens, I think it is also a unique lens that each of the commissioners are looking at from the city as a whole and also historic preservation. And, and clearly, we're still struggling with this, but I'm grateful for your answers, so thank you.
Commissioner Fox.
Thank you. I was curious if, if you know this, is all the wood in this house the same age? That the wood that is deteriorating and then the other wood that they're looking to replace, is it all the same age wood? Is it, I'm just curious, because if we have this deteriorating area, why do we think this other area is not gonna be deteriorating at some point soon? You know, I'm just, you know, when you said that the new wood that they could get would not be as good as the old wood, but the old wood isn't, you know, available, and the old wood that they have on the house is deteriorating, I, I'm struggling too, because I don't like the idea of setting a precedent here. I want our neighborhoods to be preserved. I don't want people watching this to think that they can just come right in and, and do whatever they want with these historic homes. But I also am very cognizant that we have, you know, especially in, you know, the, this, in South Florida and, you know, coastal communities, we have different environmental challenges that we didn't have before. And so I hate to have somebody's home, you know, that they already know there's this deterioration happening with the wood that they have, and then, you know, should they expect that the rest of their house is gonna be the same way shortly? So I guess I'm just curious if there's, if you know more background, I guess, about the rest of the house, that's, if it's original or the same age.
So I can address that partially. I, I don't know in this specific case the age of all of the wood on the house. I haven't done a site visit, I can't speak to that. However, I can say for the most part, when wood rots, it's actually a matter of the way that it's been maintained over the years. Obviously, not citing these owners is the reason for it. But in previous owners, if, you know, regular care, maintenance, you know, refinishing of paint, paint protects the wood from rot. If, you know, if the building has been allowed to deteriorate and preventative maintenance hasn't been performed, your wood may rot. If preventative maintenance is carried out, your wood may last for many, many, many years. So it's really a matter of, we don't know the history particularly of what went on in this building, but I would suspect that it would be probably just a lack of care or maintenance rather than an inherent issue with the wood itself.
Any other questions? Do you want to say something? Okay, that's fine.
So the, we're not sure on the, the primary residence. I'm sure there's been replacement and throughout the years for damage. The, the guest house at the rear was replaced in oh-six. So the entire structure was replaced. I'm not sure if it was allowed or not, but that was pre, pre the owners moving in. So that entire structure does have to be completely replaced, and it was replaced in oh-six.
Thank you for that information. Any other questions for the appellant? Okay, Madam City Attorney, how do we move to a decision? Do we, we're looking for a motion? What do we?
You will make, um, someone...
What's the process here?
Someone will make a motion to either approve the decision of the Historic Preservation Board or to grant or deny. You can make a motion to grant the application for appeal of the Historic Preservation Board's decision, or to deny the appeal. It would be an appropriate motion as well.
Okay.
Then you'll do a second, and we will put to writing the motion and provide it to the mayor for execution.
All right, is there a motion to be made?
I'm still struggling, so I, I'm not ready to make a motion. I don't know if somebody else is.
Yeah, that's the question I asked, whether there was a motion to be made. That's what we're, so if nobody hops up, then there won't be a motion. In which case, what happens? Okay, Commissioner Ward.
When I was just reading the proposed motion for approval without conditions, it, it's not specific, because down below it does say on May twenty, twenty-two, it was replacement of siding with waterboard. So if I'm, the way that this is, this language is constructed, it would mean that they would have to go with, nothing says Harding on here, same, same, same style that we've been discussing, or...
I, I believe in your motion, you can specify whether it's smooth, hardy, stucco, whatever material you, you choose to use.
And I apologize, they have written proposed motions for you to look at and consider.
Yeah, okay. So I will repeat the question, do we have a motion?
Mayor, may I ask another question, or you've already asked for the motion? So I need to, we need to move before any other discussion is had?
Love you have a question, go ahead and ask your question.
Okay, so we've talked a lot of, thank you, Mayor. And we've talked a lot about standard F. But standard E, we touched on as well, that distinctive features, finishes, and construction techniques, or examples of craftsmanship that characterize a historic property shall be preserved. I mean, there's other elements, I feel like, that make the case for approval here that we haven't really focused on, and, you know, and I guess I just keep hearing, and I respect the attorney and both attorneys and city staff, really making the case for denial. But I guess, you know, I, I really get the sense that the commission is saying it might be a new day, and it might be a new time for looking at alternatives that fall within the where possible materials.
If, if I may, and I would first say that this attorney's not making a recommendation for approval or denial, and that the standards that are here for you to look at, you can approve or deny based on any one of those standards that you find is applicable to the application before you.
Oh, it doesn't need to meet all of them, it just, any one of them?
If any one of them, well, you apply all of the standards to the application. If, if one of them in particular warrants a denial, generally speaking, the Historic Preservation Board outlines which one is, is subject to a denial. They should match whichever ones are applicable to the application that's before you. The staff had pointed out two of the particular provisions that they had used to warrant a denial, and that's why those were emphasized and why we parsed through what the definition of those were. But certainly, if you move to, and I don't know what you're moving to approve or to deny, and you want to spell out which standards support that decision, then you could do that in your motion. And follow-up, Mayor?
Yes.
Just a, a follow-up on a side note, since we are talking about future guidelines, I most definitely see some abuse as well in the communities. And I know that that's something we hear about from our neighbors and demolition by neglect and, you know, other situations that we need to look at. So, you know, even more support for taking a look at our, at our guidelines.
President Ward.
Is demolition by neglect something that would be a code enforcement matter? Which is also the city's responsibility to patrol, to report, and to address.
Yeah, there, there are provisions under the Historic Preservation Code ordinance that property owners get cited for, for not keeping their structures in compliance with the standards.
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. And, and my general observation of reading this information and the information that has been presented to us today, to me today, by the applicant, it is my feeling, when I review point number six, that it shall match the old, the old in design, color, texture, and other visual qualities. I believe that those standards have been met, or that we can require that those standards are all met prior to, in, in the motion. And I think that when the motion is made, should we agree to move forward, I think that we should be very specific, recognizing that things do change, and you can still stay true to the historic character and aesthetic of the property without the material matching exactly. And I believe that over time, we as a society have simply seen improvements in everything. We don't use dot-matrix anymore, but we still use printers. So I think that we should take all of that into consideration.
Okay, I will ask, is there a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve the certificate of appropriateness for the replacement of wood siding at two-two-one Greenwood Drive based on the factual testimony presented, the application submitted, and the staff report, along with the findings that the feature matches the old in design...
that the feature matches the old in design, color, texture and other visual qualities and period.
Uh, it's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, discussion, yeah, I am, excuse me?
Sorry, I thought you said discussion, I said yes, sorry.
Yeah, well, I was about to, that's okay, go ahead.
I just, I thought that the motion maybe needed to include hard, like the material because then it's open to whether you're using stucco or hard egg. I just wanted to throw that there as a potential discussion.
Madam Attorney, can you clarify? Uh, the proposed motion said and where possible materials, but I left that out because I didn't, I agree with Commissioner Ward. I think if it needs to say similar to hardy board, I'm happy to add that. I just didn't want to distinguish, or if you think it, it captures the essence of what we're saying, if I read and where possible materials.
I think if you're going to read the standard, you read the whole standard.
Okay.
Um, and if you're going to say that the material that, that you find, um, that you would like staff to review is the hardy board material, then you can include that in your motion as well.
Okay. May I amend it then, please, Mayor?
You, you're going to amend your motion?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll reread it. Approve the certificate of appropriateness for replacement of wood siding at two-twenty-one Greenwood Drive based on the factual testimony presented, the application submitted and the staff report along with the findings that the feature matches the old in design, color, texture and other visual qualities and where possible materials with the intent to use hardy board or a similar product.
Okay, this seconded or do you accept that amendment?
Second.
Okay, so the motion has been amended and seconded now, discussion. Uh, I, I am still, I, I guess, not troubled, but, uh, I go back to the fact that the owner had originally agreed, uh, to, uh, use the original, um, wood, uh, material, not the hardy board. Uh, but only because the job was bigger than they thought and probably they, they were going to incur more expense. Uh, then they come back, uh, and say, no, we can't do that anymore. So, so now the scope of the job is the controlling factor and not the materials themselves. So, so for that reason, I'm going to vote against, uh, the motion because I am, I, I, I still believe that we need to do everything we can to preserve the integrity uh, of these historic homes. And, and if we open up this Pandora's box, I, I think it, it, we're going to be headed down a slippery slope. Any other discussion on the motion?
Yep, and, and Mayor, for your record, your vote will only be in the event of a tie.
Okay. So never mind. Okay, all right, so, um, if there's no other discussion, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, uh, like sign. Okay, motion carries unanimously, uh, three, four, two, zero. Okay. Very good, uh, that is that item. Now we're ready to move to, uh, comments from the public. Uh, we have two, uh, cards, Allison, uh, Butcher, Vulture and Sandy Makovic. Allison? Is Allison here? All right, Sandy Makovic.
Sandy Makovic, West Palm Beach, Florida. Uh, Mr. Farnes, on feeding the homeless, Mr. Farnes said, there are places that feed the homeless on the weekends. I would like, this is a public records request, I want the name of the places that feed the homeless on the weekends and their addresses. Glad I made you smile. Okay, you're all voting yes. Shame on you. But you don't know what shame is. Keith, you named off a bunch of places that, that helped the homeless. The mental health, you do, you suggest, they recommend that they go to mental health. Where is there a mental health hospital in West Palm Beach to help these people? Where are the beds in West Palm Beach? What has the city done? Built someplace for them and give them beds and a roof over their house? You're too busy voting for high rises apartments, Class A office space. The Bristol that sells, the, a cheap, a cheap, cheap, cheap place in the Bristol is a couple of million dollars. This, this is where all your priorities are, the wealthy. I don't believe you's passed this. This, this'll hit me tomorrow morning. I would like an update, a lot of residents would like an update on the Sunset Lounge. What, what's happening there? Let's go back to the homeless for a minute, if, if you's interested. F and B arrives at the spot, four-thirty, four-forty-five. In between that. They set up the tables, they set up the food, the line starts to go through. They're grateful for a bowl of rice and black beans. They're done feeding and it's broken down and F and B is gone by six o'clock. So you people are making a big deal for about an hour and fifteen minutes. The people that look down their nose at the homeless don't want to see them. Scripps News, watch them, there are more homeless on the street today that are senior citizens than in the history of this country. They reported that today.
Thank you very much, thank you very much. Okay, that's the last card, so we'll now turn to comments from members of the dais, beginning with, uh, President Warren.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Um, and as you know, I represent the city of West Palm Beach on the Palm Beach County League of Cities, where there are thirty-nine municipalities that are represented, all of the municipalities in Palm Beach County. And there is not an elected official that envies the very hard decisions that we make. There isn't one person that I speak with when we meet that doesn't understand what it takes to make the, to sit before the community and weigh in on this information and taken into consideration vulnerable populations. I believe that everybody deserves to be housed and fed and clothed and have the opportunity to be clean and have a shower without going to a gym in order to achieve it, without living in their cars. But I also believe that without a universal solution, that the city of West Palm Beach is as, is as progressive in thought and action as we could possibly be with the, with the, the crisis that we see before us and, and weighing everything that we can in order to make the best decisions for the most people involved. Because we cannot fix it for everyone, but we can make progress and continue to move forward and continue to be innovative and continue to do what matters to the most people possible. There will not be a decision that I'm aware of. I'm, I'm, I'm hoping that someone could come forward with something that works and is universal. But I attended a meeting on Wednesday night at Cityside Suites where the guests were Jonathan Brown of Palm Beach County and Dr. James Green of Palm Beach County. And they were as compassionate as two people could be as department heads, as directors in addressing this problem. And I, I know that Dr. Green even provided his personal cell phone number to everyone that was present. I stand with our staff. I believe that our staff works very hard, that our staff is compassionate, that our staff has worked to provide the numbers that were reported this evening. And I know that they continue to work hard even and do things that are not reported here and do things that we don't see and that we don't capture. And I, I just believe that we are doing the best we can in the face of something that is devastating and, and something that is impacting our entire country. So I say that again, representing the city of West Palm Beach and the Palm Beach County League of Cities. So, um, as a league member, I will be attending, um, Palm Beach County Day with our colleagues from the county. I will be present in Tallahassee the second week of January where we will be addressing legislative priorities. Um, we'll be meeting with the state representatives and state senators, addressing many issues. And, uh, on, and included in those issues is certainly housing. It will be housing again this year, it was housing last year, and, uh, transportation and other priorities. But we do the best that we can to work together to, to provide the most solutions possible for the most people possible. Each year on December first, World, World AIDS Day is observed in solidarity for people around the world um, who are affected by HIV. This global movement is to unite people in the fight against the disease. In nineteen eighty-eight, two World Health Organization officers founded World AIDS Day as an international day of global health to show support for people living with HIV and to commemorate those who have died from AIDS-related illnesses. This day is reserved as a day to bridge new effective programs and policies across different, uh, sectors around HIV and AIDS. This is a friendly reminder to us all to stay safe, protect our health and get tested. I would like to acknowledge a Kwanzaa event. The African-American Research Library and Cultural Center of Palm Beach County quarterly, but, quarterly invites you to celebrate the third Kwanzaa family and community event that take, that seeks to reflect on past, reconnect, offer support and take action to heal our community. Kwanzaa is a week-long holiday from December twenty-sixth to January first, honoring African-American heritage, drawing celebrations from African musical and storytelling traditions. Kwanzaa represents seven key principles of unity, self-determination, collective responsibility, cooperative economics, purpose, creativity and faith. This event will take place on Friday, December twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-three, from two-thirty to five at Gaines Park. And there's an annual fundraiser that is open to the public, an opportunity for vendors and, uh, entertainers to participate. I am happy to acknowledge the third annual Christmas giveaway that is hosted by the, the National Panhellenic Council of Palm Beach County. I've attended the first two and they were amazingly successful at, um, galvanizing the community and getting toys to children so they, uh, so that they could enjoy the holiday season. So I encourage you to go out and support the third annual, uh, Christmas toy giveaway. And, um, it's actually going to be at two events, two locations this year, which shows that it is growing and, um, that there is a need. So the location where it originated, um, where it originated, I, I, at Cityside Suites, correct? And, uh, it has grown in capacity and will now be held at the Heart and Soul Park, which is at eight-twenty-five North Rosemary Avenue in West Palm Beach. And the south location is at Saint Man, Saint Matthews Parish Hall at four-oh-five Southwest Third Street in Delray Beach. And I would like to wish everyone a happy Hanukkah, a Merry Christmas, a happy Kwanzaa, happy holidays to you all, and I'll see you next year.
Thank you very much. Um, by, by the way, the city is a sponsor of the, uh, Divine Nine, uh, event. Uh, Commissioner Ward?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I, I wanted to make a couple announcements tonight. One, as usual, we have our police, uh, police chiefs, uh, North End Police Meeting this Wednesday, December thirteenth at six-thirty at Gaines Park. Please be there to address any concerns you have with regards to safety or any security issues. Um, Old Northwood Holiday Home Tour that I think is sold out, but just to let you guys know or remind, um, it is this upcoming Sunday from four to eight, that's just Sunday, the December seventeenth. Maybe you have a friend who has an extra ticket. Um, but I went around, they, they lit their tree on Sunday and on Saturday I drove around with another resident who has a, a golf cart and, um, looked at all the lights and had the, um, um, the pressure of determining which house was best lit. Um, it was sometimes as hard as decisions up here, but, um, I hope they're happy with it because it was, they didn't give me any criteria, it was my personal perspective. Um, and, um, it, there is a RISE Annual Elementary Toy Drive, um, that is going on and I think it ends tomorrow, but you can certainly contact them to see if there's any wiggle room on the days, but they're located at seven-two-three Thirty-Ninth Street. Um, so if you're looking to make any donations, if you're small, their goal is to collect more than a thousand gifts. Um, and they also have Amazon links and everything like that. And so if you are curious, you can either reach out to my office or reach out directly to RISE. Um, and then a fun notification for all those who have been dealing with the train noise, um, thanks to our lovely Bright Line, we are implementing our Quiet Zone as of tomorrow, December twelfth, for the North End. Um, so thank you, Mayor, thank you staff for working diligently to get this approved. I know that there's a lot of residents, um, past the downtown who are very excited about it. And if I could make a plea to our lovely representative, um, President Warren, uh, while you're up, um, talking with everybody, while homelessness is a huge issue, those wraparound services and those mental health services are so important. And so if there is a way to mirror that or make sure that people are focusing on making sure that if we're finding housing, that they're getting those other services to keep them in their homes as well, um, it's a, it's of tremendous importance. Um, and I know you covered all of the holidays, but I do know that, um, just given the sentiment that's going on nationally right now, I wanted to recognize that, that Hanukkah did start at the end of last week. And, um, to those celebrating, I hope you know that you're in a safe city to be able to do so. That's it, thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Fox?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I think many of my colleagues last week, um, had the opportunity to do a test ride on a potential new, um, mobility option for the city. And we are having another, um, electric vehicle testing this week on Thursday. So we have two test rides, um, one at ten-thirty and one at eleven-thirty. They're open to about thirty participants. And, um, you have to email Jessica Keller, J Keller at W P B dot org if you want to schedule a time. But I'm really excited about this. I had the opportunity to see the vehicle last week, I really loved it. It's, it's, I think it was called the Cute Bus and it really was very cute. It was kind of tiny, it was, um, the step up was very low to the ground, so it was a lot easier to get into than the trolley was for, um, some of our older, um, residents. And it was very accommodating for an ADA compliant and it was just very, it had a nice feel to it. It was very open and sunny. And so this vehicle that we're going to be testing this week looks also, um, like a good option. Anyway, I'm very excited to just start working on what our phase two, I guess, is going to be of our, our mobility plan and trying to connect people better from all areas of West Palm Beach. So again, that is on Thursday. Um, the West Palm Beach Police Department and the Fund will be hosting a winter pop-up on Friday, December twenty-second, from five to seven PM, um, at nineteen fifteen Spruce Avenue. Um, that's Cheerful Street and Spruce Ave. They'll be giving away toys, Chick-fil-A and other fun activities for kids and families. Um, Solento is still collecting unwrapped toys as well as all the Mint Eco car washes. So if you haven't found a place to donate yet, um, those are two good options. And I wanted to just mention that last week I had the opportunity to speak at a graduation ceremony for, it's called the Career Online High School. Um, it's actually held at the Mandel Public Library. So it's a really cool opportunity for older, um, adults that maybe didn't have the opportunity to graduate from high school because of some family or personal trauma, but that they have always looked back with regret and wanted to go to high school experience, having classmates, having a class-like setting rather than just getting a GED. So it's, um, a thousand dollars for a scholarship that it's, there's actually a lot of, um, sort of auditioning that goes on behind the scenes to, to be able to enroll into this program. Once you're enrolled, it is a full scholarship. You have, um, all the teachers and at your, and other resources, there's librarians to help you. And so last week, that was the first graduation that they had, they asked me to come speak because I'm the commission liaison for the library. And they also allowed all of the graduates to speak. And so to hear their, uh, the things that they were willing to share about how far they've come in their lives, why they weren't able to graduate when they were eighteen and, you know, many of them had their grandchildren that were there. But it had spent a lifelong dream for them to actually go to high school in a way that they felt like they would have comrades and, um, other people that were kind of in the same, um, position. So I think, you know, we, our library does so many things that we would never know about. I had no idea that this program was available. It's absolutely incredible. It's absolutely incredible to see the kind of bright light in these graduates, the opportunity for them to share this with their families. They had the caps and gowns and it just was really, it was, there was a lot of tissues involved for all of us because it just was an incredible experience. So they are gonna, it's ongoing at the library, it is a thousand dollars for scholarships, and I'm going to be contributing to them. I definitely told Lisa Hathaway that I would mention it to all of my colleagues if anyone else would like to participate because it's really rewarding. And I was just very, very moved to see that and very appreciative to both Lisa and Alyssa Rudinsky, who is the person in the library who is overseeing the program. So that's all I have. Thank you and happy holidays.
Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you. It was really nice to get to hear all of those events because, you know, I was reflecting on what I was going to talk about today, and I was really taken by Gaines Park this morning. I know many of us were there this morning for a big announcement. And that park is beautiful, and I know that it's undergoing some renovations and, and all of our parks are getting some, or many of our parks are getting some much-needed facelifts. But the library is such an amazing resource. We have programs for those interested in entrepreneurship. We have programs for senior citizens, for families, and I just hope that many of our residents take the opportunity to explore and to find out a, a new program maybe that they didn't know about. Because I know we often highlight many of them, and it, West Palm Beach really is an amazing city to live in. And this morning, that announcement, I'm, I'm sure the mayor will talk about it as well, the announcement of a new foundation in West Palm Beach called Related Together. That Related has started where they have started by pledging eight million dollars for local West Palm Beach high school students to get full rides to Palm Beach State College. It was tremendous. And, you know, I want to say congratulations to all of West Palm Beach for, for having this opportunity now and, and hope that it continues to grow. One of my favorite events of the year is coming up. So this Friday, right outside of City Hall, is our caroling event. I'd like to say that maybe this started in our home ten years ago with my husband at the piano and just some friends gathered around the piano playing Christmas carols. And then when COVID hit, we looked at a, a place that we could maybe have this outdoors and partnered with the DDA to have an event, which now has become a life of its own. And the DDA and the city are putting on a dueling pianos event of which my husband Monty will make a special appearance. There's a coveted twelve days of Christmas carol that everybody always really enjoys. And I hear maybe our local famous Elvis might be making an appearance as well. So that's this Friday at six PM outside of City Hall. Last year, I remember meeting some individuals who took the Bright Line up from Fort Lauderdale just because they heard about this event. So it really does get you in the holiday spirit. People from all walks of life come and join, whether they know the songs or not, the words are provided, and it really is a great community experience. And so I just want to say happy holidays, happy Hanukkah, happy Kwanzaa, Merry Christmas. Please stay safe and stay healthy. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, as you know, this is the last meeting of, City Commission Meeting of December. The next City Commission Meeting will be held on January eighth in the new year. Quick reminder about closure, City Hall and the library will be closed on Monday and Tuesday, January twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth for Christmas, as well as, they'll both be closed on Monday, January the first for New Year's Day. And yes, Commissioner, thank you for bringing up the announcement today about the creation of a new nonprofit called Related Together. More than a hundred people were gathered to hear about this new private grant-making foundation. And, and their mission is to fund projects that will foster change, transform lives, and lead to economic growth in our city, the neighborhoods of the historic Northwest, Coleman Park, and Pleasant City. This is very, very exciting. As you know, sitting on this dais, there, there are so many needs out there. And to have the private sector step up and say they too want to assist with the mission, the vision of making West Palm Beach a community of opportunity for all is very exciting. So they will be contributing funds focused on education, housing, income and employment opportunities, healthcare access, arts and culture engagement, and digital accessibility again to the neighborhoods of Coleman Park, Pleasant City, and the historic Northwest, all areas that have been historically underserved. And the kickoff was the announcement by Stephen Ross, the chairman of Related Southeast, of his personal pledge of eight million dollars to establish the Stephen M. Ross Emerging Scholars Program at Palm Beach State College. And as was mentioned, this will provide tuition-free post-secondary degrees and credentials to the graduates of Palm Beach Lakes and Forest Hill High Schools, which are both located in our city. It would also fund college preparation advisors in those high schools. So it's not a matter of just giving the kids a check and they get into college unprepared. So they will have an opportunity to prepare for the college experience while they are still in high school and some even in middle school. And it will provide paid peer mentorship programs with existing Palm Beach State College students. This is very exciting, and Related Southeast will lead the effort to recruit other contributors, other donors to the Related Together Fund. Very exciting, very exciting event. This Wednesday will be another installment of Soul in the City. Noteworthy guitarist and producer Adam Howley, he's made waves in contemporary jazz, has earned acclaim as an innovative artist, composer, and band leader, has four albums, thirteen Billboard number-one hits as a producer, and his fifth and current album, What Christmas Means to Me, is his first holiday offer. He will be performing on this Wednesday at the Lake Pavilion in our humble city of West Palm Beach. Tickets are still available untold, so go to W P B dot org for complete details. And as you all know, I was in Dubai last week for COP twenty-eight, and boy, what an experience that was to, to be at an international conference. There were over seventeen hundred persons, well, more than that if you consider vendors, et cetera, seventeen hundred delegates. I had the fortune of being one of a hundred and fifty mayors from fifty countries. There were thirty of us from the United States, and I had the privilege of, of, of being one of those thirty. I attended a plenary session, and then this was really kind of mind-blowing for me to, to realize I was in this room. We're heads of state of United Kingdom, France, United Arab Emirates, Bahamas, Colombia, and Kenya addressed the mayors to talk about climate change. The one thing that, that I noticed, being there, is unlike in our country where climate change, sustainability is like a political football, you know, there are folks who say it's a hoax and, 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 you know, it's a waste of money, et cetera. At this conference, even though the president of United Arab Emirates was the president of COP twenty-eight, some criticized that because UAE is the biggest oil and gas producer in, in the world. From developing countries to developed countries, the, the, the unity of message was inspiring. And then that message was we are all on one planet. And this issue of climate change is real, and we need to find solutions to, to, to solve it. There, there was no back and forth, there was no debate about the legitimacy of this threat to our planet. So that was very refreshing to be in, in, in the room and, and in those conversations where it was, the, the accepted view was that we need to do something about climate change. And now the, the conversation then ensued on what to do. The, the major development was the establishment of a climate finance fund. I was amazed to hear that of the climate monies available to date, less than ten percent of the climate funds available have gone to urban areas, which is kind of mind-boggling when you think that urban areas where you have the density, the population, in many cases cars, urban areas tend to be the largest consumers and emitters of, 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 of the carbon. So the, the fact that there's a disconnect between the amount of monies addressing climate change and urban areas, and I, I think that's one reason why the decision was made that it would be important to have mayors at the table. You know, cities, cities tend to be underfunded when it comes to fighting this battle. But we, as mayors, commissioners, we are on the forefront when we have to deal with the consequences of sea level rise and, and, and climate change. So it is only appropriate that, since we are on the front line in this battle, that we be part of the conversation looking for solutions. So it was, it was a very, very heady experience, it was a tremendous opportunity, I was honored to be there. And Dubai is just an amazing city. And I, I, I know you all are waiting for the answer to the elephant in the room, or the camel in the room. Yes, I rode the camel, so I'm still married to my lovely wife. So anyway, that was a true honor. And as I close, I want to wish everyone a joyous Hanukkah. May the Festival of Lights illuminate our community with unity and resilience, particularly during this time. As we celebrate, let the menorah inspire hope, and may the glow of togetherness and unity guide us toward a future of compassion and prosperity. Happy Hanukkah to everyone and their loved ones, Merry Christmas, happy Kwanzaa, and happy holidays to everyone. And as we enter into twenty twenty-four, I extend the warm wishes for a year brimming with joy, prosperity, and community strength. May our collective efforts as a community bring about positive change, fostering unity and resilience. Together, let's embrace the opportunities ahead, creating a brighter future for this great city of ours. So God bless each and every one of you, God bless your families, and God bless the great city of West Palm Beach. Good night, this meeting is adjourned.